Call to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 14th, 2018 Hillsborough Township Planning Board meeting. This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Peasance?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Hesseig?
Here.
Mr. Scobbo?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Mr. Delcor?
Here.
Vice Chair Julian?
Here.
First order of business tonight will be disposition of minutes. We have two first dated May 3rd of 2018. A copy of the minutes have been provided to you in your packet.
The eligible members are the Chair, the Secretary, Mr. Sarachi, Mr. Delcor, Mr. Wagner, and Mr. Scobbo.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hesseig?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Delcor?
Yes.
Chair LePine?
Yes. Next would be minutes dated May 10th, 2018. Again, another copy is presented to you in your packet.
Eligible members, Mr. Chairman yourself, the Vice Chair, the Secretary, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Scobbo, and Mr. Weinstein.
Okay, thank you. Entertained a motion to approve?
I'll make that.
Thank you, Mr. Scobbo. We have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hesseig?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair LePine?
Yes. Next would be disposition of resolution for Apex Land Associates LLC, Apex Sports and Events, File 18 PB01 MSP. Again, another copy of that has been provided to you in your packet, and we will entertain a motion to approve. Who is eligible?
The eligible members are the Chair, the Vice Chair, the Board Secretary, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Scobbo, and Mr. Weinstein.
I will make a motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
Second. And roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hesseig?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair LePine?
Yes. Planning Board business, there is none. Special community reports, none. Is there any business from the floor that is not on tonight's agenda? Not on tonight's agenda? It's okay. Seeing none.
Just want to make sure, did you have some on the agenda that look at you wanting to come up? Just wanted to make sure.
Everything okay? We're good? All right. So we go to no consideration ordinances. That will bring up our first public hearing tonight. Be Terrace Industrial Park. Bear with me. 08 PB08 MJF, 2018 extension request, Block 185, Lot 1, Weston Road. Applicant is seeking a one-year extension through June 30th of 2019 for amended final major subdivision approval, resolution dated 9/4 of 8, one-year extension resolution dated 7/7 of 8, or 16, excuse me, and a one-year extension resolution dated 7/13 of 17 to subdivide 19.586 acres, excuse me, into 10 lots for an industrial park, including one stormwater lot with improvements and conditions on property in the I-1 light industrial zoning district. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lucille Davey here from Mason Griffin &amp; Pearson, representing the applicant.
If you can move the mic as close as you can, because it's a close mic. Thank you very much.
Do I need to repeat that?
Nope.
Okay. As you indicated, we are here seeking our final one-year extension on this application. It was previously approved in 2008, extended through the New Jersey Permit Extension Act in 2016. There was an extension in 2016 and 2017. This is the final one-year to go to June 30th of 2019. The applicant has been in negotiations to sell the property to a developer, and he's also, they've taken some steps with regard to meeting the conditions that are included in the resolution with regard to some of the engineering that's required. So that work is already underway. They seek just this one final year extension.
Any questions from anyone? Motion to open the public?
Salute.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any questions from the public on this application? Okay. Seeing none. Motion to close?
Salute.
Second. Okay. All in favor? Aye. All right, so we have a motion to grant a one-year extension to, would be, what, July, to this date of 2019?
June 30th, 2019, as being the final extension.
Okay.
Do we have any commentary from our professionals?
I don't think so.
None.
All right, we take a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
All right. And we have a second. Okay. And we'll take a roll call.
Peasance?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hesseig?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Delcor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair LePine?
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day. Thank you. Our next up will be WSH Enterprises, Inc., amended final, 08 PB15 NJF, 2018 extension request, Block 148, Lot 24, Beekman Lane. Applicant seeking one-year extension through June 30th of 2019 for amended final major subdivision approval, resolution dated 3/13/14, one-year extension resolution dated 7/7 of 16, and one-year extension resolution dated 7/13 of 17 to subdivide 8.8244 acres into eight lots to consist of seven single-family dwelling lots, one detention basin lot with improvements and conditions on property in our residential zoning district.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, members of the public. My name is Francis P. Linness, and I'm pleased to represent WSH tonight. This is indeed our last request for an extension, our final request for an extension. The board originally approved an amended final subdivision back in 2014 for seven lots, seven residential building lots in the R-zone off of Beekman Lane. In addition to that, you approved a detention basin lot. There are two items that need to be addressed before we were allowed to start construction, and that is, we're still, we're almost ready to post our bond with the HTM UA. That's one item that's outstanding, and we have to go in for an extension of a DEP GP permit, number six. So when those two items are cleared, we're going to be moving forward. So we are requesting the final one-year extension through June 30th, 2019.
Okay. Davis? Mr. White? Good. All right. Anybody from the board? All right. Motion to open public?
Salute.
Second. All in favor? All right. Any questions on this testimony from, for this application, from the public? Okay. Seeing none. Motion to close?
Salute.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. So we make a motion to approve a one-year final extension dated to?
June 30th, 2019.
June 30th, 2019.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Scobbo. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peasance?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hesseig?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Delcor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair LePine?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Linness.
Have a good evening.
You too. All right. So we go to our last public hearing of the day. Here's SB Capital Associates LLC, General Tool, 18 PB04 MSP, Block 183, Lot 35 and 35.01-284, Sunnymead Road. Applicant seeking preliminary final major site plan approval and waivers to construct a 77,745 square foot warehouse office building with associated parking and stormwater management on property located in the I-1 light industrial zoning district, EC review dated 5/21/18. Counselor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Mike O'Grodnick. I'm an attorney at Savo Shaw Gillespie O'Grodnick &amp; Fisher in Somerville, and I'm here upon, on behalf of the applicant, SB Capital Associates LLC, with the consent of the property owner, John D'Amici Jr. of General Tool Specialties, Inc. As indicated by the chairman, this application seeks preliminary and final site plan approval for a 9.8 acre parcel located at Block 183, Lots 34 and 35.01, with a street address of 284 Sunnymead Road, which is Lot 35. The applicant seeks approval to construct the 77,745 square foot warehouse office building on the property in the LI light industrial zone that borders the Conrail Railroad tracks to the east. Notably, this application does not require any variances. The proposed building contains 74,245 square feet of warehouse and 3,500 square feet of office space to support the warehouse operation. The proposed building includes a demising wall that separates the warehouse and office space into two separate leasing units. One unit would have 37,108 square feet of warehouse space and 1,750 square feet of office, and the other unit will have 37,137 square feet of warehouse space and 1,750 square feet of office space. The existing driveway to General Tool Specialties, Inc. on Lot 35 will also be eliminated and restored to grass, and both lots will share the proposed driveway for Lot 35.01. The proposed driveway and warehouse office building will be located in 35.01. Lot 35.01 is a flag lot that was created by subdivision granted by the Hillsborough Township Planning Board on September 7th, 2006 pursuant to application 05 PB23 MRV. In addition, Lot 35.01 is all pre-existing non-conforming as the minimum lot frontage for the driveway. 200 feet is required where 51.18 feet is provided, and a minimum lot width where 200 feet is required and 51.18 feet is provided pursuant to the variances already granted by the Hillsborough Planning Board on September 7th, 2006. The following waivers are required in order to grant relief requested by the applicant. The buffer requirement of the L-1 zone, 10-foot buffer and driveway portion of Lot 35.01 and 20-foot buffer in building portion of Lot 35.01 proposed where 60 feet is required by the ordinance, 188 107 1E1. The applicant is also requesting the following design waivers. Parking space dimension, we're proposing 10 by 18 where 10 by 20 is in the ordinance. Parking lot aisle width, 25 feet proposed where 30 foot is required, and tree mitigation hardship waiver under Section 188 64E. The last design waiver is lighting waiver for 1.19 foot candles, but .5 is permitted, but I believe we'll be eliminating that design waiver. With me tonight, I have our civil engineer, Tom Decker, from Van Cleef Engineering Associates, our architect, Arthur Hen, our applicant's representative from SB Capital, Isaac Newman. We also have available to testify if necessary, Gary Dean, who's our traffic engineer, and Amy Jones, who is our environmental consultant. Unless there are any legal questions, I'd like to introduce Tom Decker, our civil engineer, to explain the site plan.
Please proceed. We are short one microphone today, so if anyone comes up for comment we need to share.
I do. Thomas Decker, D-E-C-K-E-R.
I would ask that the board accept Mr. Decker as a professional engineer, as he's been here for these four years.
He's been here for these four years. Just recently, a couple of weeks ago, I think he'll take his qualifications.
An exhibit of the site plan that I'll put up, I guess this would be A1. A1 is a plan prepared by our office. It's titled Site Landscaping Exhibit. It is dated March 30th, 2018, and essentially it's a colored rendering of the site with various aspects from the site plan submission included in it. For orientation purposes, the property is located along Sunnymead Road. Sunnymead Road is to the west, property is to the east. To the east of our property, it's bound by the railroad, and on the other side of the railroad is the Royce Brook Golf Course. To the north is Zoned Residential. There is a single-family home on this lot. Towards Sunnymead Road, it is a narrow, very deep lot that goes all the way back to the railroad. And then on the southern portion is a wooded lot also within the I-1 zone. Property topography, well, let me back up. Property is currently improved in the front with the General Tool Specialties site. As was indicated prior, General Tools owns both properties. Property to the rear, Lot 35.01, was subdivided off in 2006 as a flag lot. It has a 50-foot flagstaff coming back to the flag portion of the lot. Front portion is improved with General Tools building, access drive to Sunnymead Road parking facility, and there is a solar facility to the rear of that, serving the building. The rear property is primarily wooded and brush, and the woods, we've had the trees evaluated, and the trees out there, most of which are unhealthy or dying disease. It's not really a really good stand of woods out there. It slopes, half of the property slopes to the northeast, the other property slopes to the southwest. There are two wetland areas located on the property. There is a wetland area which reaches from the culvert underneath Sunnymead Road, comes up along the property line, straddles the property line, there's a 50-foot buffer associated with that, and to the rear, there's also a wetland area in this northeast corner. These areas have been recently delineated, and an LOI has been submitted to DEP. We have not received that LOI yet. However, the wetlands that are shown are actually larger than what they were on the original 2006 approval. The current delineation just shows them as if they've expanded. So we actually have a little bit less area on this lot to the rear. The wetlands didn't previously come up to the southwest corner, and at the northeast corner, they were just touching the property. So we've got some additional wetlands and buffers that we had to work with. What's proposed is a 77,745 square foot warehouse and office building. That building has 74,245 square feet of warehouse space, 3,500 square feet of office, and the architect will go through more of the building elevations and layout, but essentially it's been divided into two units to be leased, the office space divided between them. There are 32 parking spaces proposed, 27 are required. There's a loading area to the rear of the building, so you come in the access drive, which is a 28-foot wide proposed drive within the flagstaff, runs along the northern property line to the loading bay area to the rear. There are six loading docks on each, in each units, for a total of 12 loading docks, and this is a recessed loading area. So the trucks will pull in, or back in, and they're, they'll be loading at grade with the building. As I said earlier, there are 32 parking spaces in the front, so we've isolated the parking and the loading areas, that the parking serves the office space employees, and then we've tucked the loading in the back, where due to the depth of the adjacent lots, the railroad, once the trucks enter the site, you're really not going to, you're really not going to see them back here from the road or the adjacent properties. Landscaping, we've proposed a landscaping plan. There have been comments from Mr. White with regards to type of species and so forth. We'll certainly work with Mr. White's office as far as substituting plants to his approval. As indicated, we are requesting a hardship waiver for the tree mitigation. In calculating the cost for, as the board is aware, the provision in the ordinance has mitigation requirements where you plant so many trees for, certain number of trees you take out based on the size of the trees you're taking out. And we've calculated that number at, I believe it's 734 trees that would have to be replaced based on the township's schedule or tree size and so forth. What is proposed are 232. So to make up that difference, we take a look at what the total project cost is, and the township has a provision for a hardship waiver where the cost of the landscaping cannot exceed 1.5% of the total site improvement cost. So we come up with that number, which is $77,000 and some change. We divide that by the cost per tree of $350, and we come up with that, based on that waiver, we would need, I believe, 238 trees. So we're six trees short of that. We'll try to find a location to put those six trees somewhere on the property, but we would still need the waiver from providing the other trees to make up the 734. And again, that's in your ordinance, so we'd request a waiver for that. Lighting, the lighting is in accordance with the Hillsborough standards. Mr. White had pointed out in his letter that the average foot candles on the site, ordinance allows a maximum of .5, and in the table, there are various averages shown, and I believe the one average that was cited is for, is what's in the drive area. There's also an area in there for the total site, and that's that little under .2 foot candles. So we'll certainly double-check that, but we are in compliance and we will comply. The property will be served by public water and public sewer. The sewer currently has been extended for the subdivision that's under construction on the western side of Sunnymead Road. We're going to be extending that sewer line down to the property, to our property, past the flagstaff, and then sewer service will be run into the building.
Mr. Decker, will that service the front building as well, the sewer?
My understanding is that the property owner in front, General Tools, wishes to continue to use their septic. As far as lot coverage, 60% is permitted by the ordinance, and we have 54.32, so we comply with the lot coverage requirements. Stormwater management is provided in two locations. We have a extended detention basin to the rear of the property. This is more of your conventional detention basin surface, basically an excavated storage facility for the stormwater. That discharges to the wetland area. We are in process of, we applied to DEP for a general permit number 11 that permits that discharge. That basin collects only the roof drainage. Based on the current stormwater standards, they like to keep roof drainage and paved drainage separately. Roof is considered clean, the road is considered, you know, has temporary suspended solids and so forth. So the roof is directed to the rear basin. The rest of the, all of the road and drive is being collected and stored in underground storage facilities, stone and piping. Mr. White had some comments with regards to taking care of the sediment before it enters into the underground system. We'll certainly work with Mr. White's office to satisfy his concern there. Delaware Canal Commission has approved, not without issuing an approval, but they have issued a staff report that essentially approved the water quantity and water quality aspects of the stormwater. From a groundwater recharge, we've provided soil testing, and the soil testing does not support permeability in the area of the extended detention basin to the rear and the storage area in the parking lot to the front of the building. One of the comments that Mr. White had was he was looking for additional testing, I believe, in this area, Bill? Which we can certainly work with Mr. White's office on, on providing that.
Could you mind addressing those, the non-structural methods also?
Yeah, that was one of the other, the other comments that DNR had. The only thing that they were really looking for was to provide more non-structural water quality. So we will work with DNR, reaching out to them to find out how we can incorporate that into the site. It's very difficult when you're looking at this drive here, because we have a very limited availability for treating in a non-structural method.
I mean, I see they made some comments on the report, so, I mean...
Yeah. We'll comply with DNR. We have to as an outside agency. So we're going to talk to them about other ways that we can incorporate some non-structural, but we will certainly comply with them.
Thank you.
Oh, parking. As was indicated before, we are looking for some waivers. Two of the waivers are waivers that are frequently requested, and that is for parking spaces to be 10 by 18 rather than 10 by 20. Again, going to it 10 by 18, as long as we have a two-foot overhang, which we do on all the parking spaces, you effectively have a 10 by 20 space. It helps to keep your impervious down, but still provides adequate parking. The other request is for a 25-foot wide aisle width, excuse me, in the parking area. 30 feet is required. 30 feet is quite generous in a parking area. Most of your roads are only 25 feet, or in some cases, less. Typically, standards in most municipalities are 24 as a minimum, so we would ask for a waiver there. We also are looking for a waiver for the 30-foot buffer. Due to the narrowness of the flagstaff, we can't get a 30-foot buffer along this driveway to the north, because we just don't have enough room. We have a 50-foot buffer, 28-foot wide road, so we have 11 feet on either side. That's a condition that we can't remedy. And then we bring that road back in, and we're providing 20 feet as you get towards the rear of the property. Again, we have a narrow lot to the north, narrow and deep, there's no improvements to the rear. And as stated earlier, we had to make some adjustments because we had some additional wetlands that weren't there when this subdivision was originally proposed. I don't believe we need the waiver that was mentioned earlier for the lighting. And lastly, Mr. Maskey brought up a question in his review letter about the airport hazard zone, so I'd like to, I have two other exhibits for this. Have Exhibit A2, exhibit in the middle, that's the, a colored aerial photo. Plan is titled Airport Hazard Area Exhibit, dated June 12th, 2018. To the right of that, we have Exhibit A3, which is titled Airport Hazard Area Vertical The runway for the airport is located in this area, in the upper right-hand corner of the plan. These dark lines show the, this shows the airport safety zone, and this hatch line shows the New Jersey clear zone. Proposed building is this gray rectangle here, and what we've done is we've shown a line connecting from the end of the runway across a line connecting from the end of the runway across our proposed building to the end of the airport safety zone. Along this line, we've created a profile, which is shown on A3. So on A3 to the left, what we have is the elevation of the end of the runway, which is at elevation 85, and that's per survey marker number two in AVD 88. And then our proposed building is approximately 2,450 feet away from the end of the runway, so we're just under a half a mile. Elevation of the top of the building is at elevation 114. According to the ordinance, we take a look at the slope. It's a 1-on-20 slope from the end of the runway, projected along this line on A2 to establish the vertical rise, basically duplicating a plane taking off in their angle as they're leaving their pitch. It's a 1-on-20. When you get to our building at that 2,450 feet away, that elevation is at 206.9. The top of our building is at 114, so we're clear by 92.9 feet. So that was to address Mr. Masky's comment in his letter.
Does that also apply for landing?
They don't, they don't really differentiate. It just really has that, the ordinance only requires the 20. I would expect that that would be for landing. I'm not, I'm not a pilot, I don't know. So I believe it's your approach, either whether you're landing or taking off is going to be the same. And that's essentially the project. As I said, the architect will talk about the architecture a little bit more. Oh, there is one, one thing with regards to some of the review letters. We did get a copy of Fire Chief, Fire Marshal Winneker's review, and there's one aspect of his review that, we'll comply with everything, but there's one that we can't. And that is bullet point, one, two, three, four, bullet point number six. And he's asking for an emergency access road, providing a second access point. We're unable to do that. We have a flag lot that was previously approved. We only have that means of access to the lot, and per the 2006 approval, the driveway, the existing driveway to General Tool is going to be eliminated, and General Tools' parking lot ties into that flagstaff to eliminate the driveway out onto Sunnymead Road. So we can't, and there's no, there's no possibility of putting it on the southern side because we have those wetlands that we would not be able to traverse. I could not see anything in the township ordinance that requires a secondary emergency access. I think, you know, the Fire Chief, Fire Marshal requests those, so that when he can, when we can put one in, we do, but in this particular case, unfortunately, we can't. We can comply with the rest of his letter, but that's one item that we just don't have the property to do it.
I was waiting for that one because I couldn't see where you were going to put it.
Mr. Decker, what's the width of the pavement on the access drive?
28 feet.
So it's going to accommodate two lanes?
Yes. Yeah, it's basically, it's essentially two 14-foot wide lanes. It's probably wider than many roads in Hillsborough.
And there's no gate at the front?
There's no gate, it's open. So it has, you know, it's accessible. We also will provide, Mr. Winneker, the turning movements so he can get a, demonstrating we can get a fire truck to the rear. We can also, we'll also provide, I know that there were other comments with regards to garbage truck access and so forth. We can comply with that as well. The dumpster is located at the rear of the building within this little tail of the loading area. Garbage trucks can pull in, they can negotiate a K-turn back there and leave the site. It is designed so that we can, we can have truck deliveries to the rear, so we have ample room for truck maneuverability. We can get a WB-50, a tractor trailer back there.
Is there any signage proposed?
There is no signage proposed at this time. The applicant will comply with the signage ordinance at such time where they determine a sign for the property. And I believe that that can be done without coming back to the board as long as it's in full compliance with the ordinance.
Yeah. Mr. White, anything?
This is for Mr. Decker, but can you give a little narrative with regard to what the anticipated employee count is, number of trips, et cetera?
Did you hear that question? Just, the question was, looking at the proposed use, how many employees are anticipated, hours of operation, lighting?
Hours of operate, well, we'll comply with the ordinance as far as, you know, lighting hours and so forth. Number of employees, it's a warehouse with, you know, two small office spaces as far as number of people. They anticipate 10 employees in each space, and then they have, you know, obviously they have the loading bays in the front or in the back. As far as hours, I believe we were looking at eight to six for operating hours, and then the lighting, lighting would be in accordance with the township ordinance.
Days of the week?
Days of the week would be, five days a week, business days, Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday.
I don't know if you can answer this question or not, but there'll be no outside loading or unloading in trucks? All the unloading and stuff will be inside the building?
Correct.
Okay.
Obviously, the tenant is unknown at this present time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so just so it's on the record, if one of those tenants comes in and it's a use that is perhaps not permitted or somehow changes the dynamics of the site, you realize you'd have to come back to the board?
Yes. This is, this is an application for warehouse and office space. Should a use come in that requires more parking or is not a permitted use, well, if it's not a permitted use, we'd have to go to the Board of Adjustment. But if there's anything that would change the site, yes, they'd have to come back.
Okay. Two questions. One, I thought you'd indicated that the front half of the back lot kind of sloped to the southwest?
Yes.
Where does that runoff go?
This runoff right now, well, building all gets collected through the roof drains, and that gets piped to the rear.
Okay.
Okay. And then we have storm sewer piping at the rear of the building. We have a trench drain that runs along the loading area, and then that's collected in storm sewer that gets piped to the front two underground basins. Those are collected, and then that's discharged to the swale in the front. So that gets discharged to the front of the building. So everything, it eventually, even though the back portion of the building drains to the wetlands here, it's still going to be piped into the same system, it's just going to be brought down at a low elevation.
And then with the, with the buffer?
Yes.
So even if the back area, even if you made the building smaller and made the buffer larger, you would still have, you would still need a waiver for the front?
Yes, yes, and we're, for here, because mathematically we can't...
The current situation.
The current situation. And then we are proposing landscaping. You know, we're trying to provide as much buffer landscaping along that northern property as possible. That's what these lighter green circular objects represent on the board. Also, I should mention, as part of the, I believe, the solar approval, the solar panel approval for the front lot, for Lot 35, there was an obligation for Mr. Domacy to plant, I believe it was 32 trees?
37.
37, thank you. 37 evergreen trees as a buffer between the solar and the north. Those are also shown on here, and those are not being taken into account as a credit towards the street clearing in the back, so those stand independent. That's from the prior approval.
Right now, both properties are under the same ownership, common ownership, correct?
Correct.
Is there any intention to sell off the back piece? The point being, are you going to use appropriate cross-access easements because you're using the same driveway?
Yes, the back portion is under contract for sale, so it's currently under common ownership, but it will be, it will be sold, and my understanding is that there will be a cross-access easement, providing General Tool the ability to tie into the common drive in the front.
And potentially some common maintenance agreements to maintain the driveway?
I would imagine. I'll defer to our attorney, but I believe that.
Okay. Thanks. Let it be shown on the record that the attorney was nodding and said yes.
Tom, is it your testimony that the design waivers necessitated by the site plan application are reasonable and within the general intent of the provisions of the zone, and that the literal enforcement of these design waivers would be impracticable or would exact unto hardship because of the peculiar conditions pertaining to the land in question?
Yes, basically, something that we're always looking to try to minimize impervious coverage and by granting those waivers for the pavement, that would certainly reduce that. And again, with the waiver with regards to the buffer in front, in the, on the north, again, we have some site constraints as far as providing that.
Ken, any other questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions. You mentioned the hours from eight to six.
I believe that's what...
Approximately, I guess, right?
Approximately, yeah.
So would it be expected that traffic at that time would really just be the employees coming and going? Or would it be expected that large trucks would be traveling at those times?
I would anticipate that you would have trucks coming in during those, during those time periods.
Because those are kind of close to the rush hour times as well, right?
That would be something that Gary Dean, our traffic engineer, is here, he could address if that's a concern.
Okay. And then just another question, the loading docks, there's 12 loading docks in the back of the building?
Yes.
So I guess, is there an idea of what kind of traffic of number, volume of large trucks would be going in and out every...
I would also defer that to Mr. Dean. He's done a traffic report that was submitted as part of...
But he knows about, he has the stats about the business and not just traffic behavior?
It's, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be driven by the actual tenants in the building?
Right.
As far as how frequent they're going to be.
Okay, so last question. So the number of, is it consistent, like the loading docks consistent with the zone being a light industrial? Is there any, that's okay?
There's a minimum, there's no maximum on loading docks.
Yeah, yeah, we satisfy the minimum required loading docks, so we have more in there that would help facilitate, you know, one truck being loaded, another truck arriving and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion open to public.
So move.
Second? I'll second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, hold on. So we're going to have questions on this testimony that Mr. Decker just gave. When you come up, you're going to have to hand him the mic. We need your name and your address, and then please make sure the questions are based on this testimony, not something that may come up later. So we'll start on the left side of the building first, or my left, and then we'll go to the right. So anybody on this side of the building have a question? Okay, now we'll go to the right. So the young lady in the front, you're first.
Mr. O'Grady, you may have to share your microphone.
Excuse me if I'm going to ask the wrong question.
Well, we'll let you know.
I am Gloria Kubiac.
Wait, 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 come up to the microphone first, have a seat.
You don't mind, right?
No, sit down. Have a seat.
I am Gloria Kubiac.
Spell your last name.
I live for 60 years...
Ms. Kubiac, sit down.
Sit down.
Please sit down.
Thank you.
Speak into the microphone and spell your last name so he can get it on the record, please.
And your address.
Name and address, please, and spell your last name.
Am I talking to you?
Yes.
Oh, who am I speaking to?
Right now, with your name and address, you're giving it to him.
Okay. Gloria Kubiac, 301 Sunnymead Road, Hillsborough, New Jersey, 08844.
We got that part. All right, so now what's your question?
My question is...
For Mr. Decker, okay. Speak into the microphone.
I'm saying it the wrong way, I apologize. I lived here 60 years right here. I want to know, Sunnymead Road is, my house is here, that property is there. I want to know what roads these vehicles are going to come in and go out to Sunnymead Road, right? They're going to come out of this property and go on to Sunnymead Road?
Correct.
Excuse me, sir. Are they going to widen Sunnymead Road?
No, that's not proposed.
How can they make a turn, a vehicle will make a turn right into our driveway, especially trucks? We have, I don't know how to explain it, but it is really a nightmare on Sunnymead Road. Our roads are narrow, we have ditches. I can't get out of my driveway in a little car. I don't know how these cars are going to come on to Sunnymead Road. Are they going to make a right or are they going to make a left? I mean, the trucks. And I'm talking about vehicles, cars. I'm talking about trucks. Do they go over the railroad tracks or are they going to go to Falcon Road where there's not even a street light and with all those homes there? It's horrendous.
Okay, so...
And it is not made for leave.
Mrs. Kubiac?
How it is.
So, Ms. Kubiac, up here.
No.
Do you have a question? I know you're very passionate, but what is, what is the question?
The question, I just asked...
Well, it was very long, so the question is, how, where are the trucks coming and going? Is that your question?
How are they going to come out of that driveway?
Okay.
Yeah.
And where they're going, okay.
Will it be in front of my house?
Where's your house on...
I don't know, up there.
So you're on 302 Sunnymead Road, so you're on the other side of Falcon, right?
Yeah, I'm where the factory is now.
Right across the street. Okay, so you're across the street.
That going in and out, I even once called the police because I thought there were people going in there that shouldn't be going in.
Okay.
Can I just look over there?
Sure. Let me answer a question.
So...
The question is, are they going to come out? How are the trucks going to come out?
I can...
Without hitting my mailbox?
All right.
I can, I can answer part of your question.
Part of it's going to be for Mr. Decker.
And that is, the trucks, you know, the vehicles will be coming in and out at the driveway location, onto Sunnymead. They'll be making a right or a left. We have designed the curb returns, the way that the roadway flares out to the road, to allow for the turning movements. So that's, that's how they'll be leaving the site. Gary Dean, who is our traffic engineer, can address your questions as far as, once they leave the site, are they going to the left, are they going to the right, and so forth? Because he's done a traffic analysis and has submitted a report to the board, so he'd be better to answer that question.
Okay, one other question.
Sure.
When the planes come from the airport, will they go over the building or to the side of that building to go over?
It's...
Because then they go right over my house, and I can see the people, the people in the airplane. So that's, so I don't know how high the building will be.
I can't, I can't tell you what direction the pilots are going to go once they leave the airport.
All right. It's just that I live there and I don't know what's happening.
Maybe can I just follow up on the...
Okay.
No, 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 I'm going to ask a follow-up just for your question right there. So at the driveway, how wide is that with the flare out so that we're sure there's adequate turning capacity for those vehicles, for those trucks?
Well, we have the 28-foot wide road driveway, and then we have 35-foot radius flares. So I'm going to say at the end of the flares, you have 70, probably about 100 and, close to 120 feet at the, at the width of the driveway at the road itself. So it goes from the 50 feet and it flares out to about 120. to about a hundred and twenty feet wide at the-
And that's all on the subject property?
Correct.
Did you understand that?
I don't hear you.
Okay, so I think what he was trying to say, maybe he can explain it better than I can, at the end of the driveway, the driveway flares out, so that the, the trucks coming in and out will have enough room to turn on the property without, without having to-
But once they get on the road, will they not go into our properties coming on that road?
No.
They shouldn't have to.
They shouldn't have to, I think is what he's saying.
I can't believe that, sir.
Okay.
I, I, I can't believe, with the width of that road now, I just can't, I just can't believe it. When I moved there, the road was half the size now. So they made it wider. I can't, I can't believe it. I swear, I hope I live long enough to see what's happening. I just can't comprehend it. I'm sorry to do this.
No, that's, that's why we give the notice, so you can ask your questions.
This sign is what I said sixty years ago when I moved there.
And that's why-
And I believe it today.
That's why we have to do the notice, so you can come out and ask your questions, and-
All right.
-we want to make sure you get your answers, but-
I have an exhibit I can show.
But really, he-
I don't want to hold everyone to this standard.
That's right, so we have-
I know it can't be done.
If, if I may, I do have an exhibit-
And I'm not, I'm not an engineer in any way.
All right, do you have another engine, document?
I have an exhibit that shows the truck turning-
Okay.
...in the site.
We'll call that I three, A four, sorry.
A four is titled "The Truck Turning Plan." It's dated June thirteenth, prepared by our office. This is what we were going to submit to the township engineer as part of our resolution compliance. And what we have shown here is truck turning along Sunnymead, heading north, and how it's able to pull into the site. It's a similar, it's a similar movement as you leave. So the truck is able to stay within the lane on Sunnymead. It makes the right coming in. Just to maybe further explain the driveway, the entrance to the driveway is, would be more akin to a road intersection, where you have curb flares coming out. It's not a straight driveway that just comes out to Sunnymead and gets squared off. It does have rounded curb returns, and that's what allows the truck the ability to, to turn in and out.
Just to be clear, that's proposed, or is that existing?
That's proposed.
Thank you.
Okay.
And that's, and, sorry, I just-
Go ahead.
But what you're demonstrating is the trucks coming in. When they come out, particularly when they're going to try to make a right-hand turn, go, continue going north out of that property-
When they're making a right turn, coming out?
Right, are they going to be-
Essentially, the geometry is the same on the other side. It's, it's kind of a mirror. So they can come in this way, they can also come out.
Without having to cross-
Make the right and stay within their lane on Sunnymead.
So they don't have to cross the median?
Correct.
Okay. Well, you may come back and ask Mr. Dean after his testimony, the other question you had, so we'll probably have you, you'll probably be back after the next testimony, so have a seat.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine, Ms. Kubiak.
I apologize. I know.
I know you live there. All right, so, any more questions? Okay, come up, sir. You can do the same thing, have a seat in the same chair, and say your name, address, and spell your last name, please.
My name is John Potinsky, P-O-T-Y-N-S-K-Y. I live on 295 Sunnymead Road, exactly straight across from this. We do not have sewers on the road, so as far as his drainage along that proposed road driveway to get back here, I do not know where that water's going to go. And on the opposite side, we have a stream, and when we get torrential rains, it barely can handle it. So those are a few questions I'd like to address.
Sure. Again, I'm looking at exhibit A one. In the southwest corner, there is a drainage pipe that goes under Sunnymead Road.
Right.
And the water from the site comes down, and it goes through this wetland area. There's a ditch and some wetlands that drain to this area. There's also, well, there's also somewhat of a roadside ditch, if you will, that drains to this, to this area. That's right, not a pipe.
Ditch, no sewers.
Correct.
Okay, and that stream you're talking about runs exactly on the side of my property, which right now cannot handle it without having all that being built there right now.
Okay. Part of, well, part of the major requirements of any site development is that we have to take a look at stormwater management. And as I indicated before, about half of the rear site drains in this direction naturally. We're going to be collecting water from the parking areas and the pavement area to the rear.
And all the property that's not there no more.
And it's going to the underground detention basin. What that is, it's-
And run down that one little stream.
No, sorry, he says it's going underground. They're piping it underground.
Where's, where's it going underground?
Into a, into a detention basin underground. It's going-
To what detention basin?
They're building a detention basin underground, just to have all the water running.
And that's going to collect all that-
Yeah, maybe, maybe we have, Mr. White, you want to-
Well, this is a series of pipes that are going to temporarily store, and there's a control structure that reduces the flow, the peak flow, from the site, which is required by our new stormwater control ordinance, which actually, not new, but it's been around for about a decade now. So they're looking at the impact downstream, so to make sure that your stream's not impacted, he has to reduce the peak flow coming from that site going to that stream. DEP's requiring it, DRC now-
Delaware, now commissioned township.
They're reviewing it also. The SWOAC has been checking, and our office is reviewing it.
Correct.
Make sure he's in compliance, so that there is no impact to your stream.
Right. And as a matter, as a matter of fact, as part of that, we actually not only have to meet what's there, we have to reduce it. So we, we have to reduce it to eighty percent, down to eighty percent.
All that water runs to where?
All that water, there are, as Mr. White explained, there are two underground detention basins. Those basins are composed of piping and stone. They're collected there. Then there's an outlet structure, basically, an underground structure that has a control in it, that controls the flow, meters it. And then there's a proposed pipe that comes along the front, that will discharge to that culvert that comes underneath Sunnymead Road. At the end of the day, all the water that comes from this property, both to the southwest and to the northeast, needs to be held back to certain percentages. We have to, we can't release more than fifty percent of the two-year storm that went there before, seventy-five percent for the ten-year storm, and eighty percent for the hundred-year. So we actually have to reduce those flows.
All right.
And that's peak flows, correct?
And the other one is your traffic study. That property there was not zoned trucking. And now, do we know how many trucks would be coming in and out of there every single day, and every single night? You say eight to six, but who's going to stop it in the future from running? I personally know that the front property zone might manufacture, he brings property out to trucks right now.
Which one, this one?
Yes.
Well, it's, it's-
The zone truck is yours?
It's, it's-
Why, you can't have anything from outside?
Well, to answer your question about the zoning, both lots are zoned as-
Light manufacturing.
I, I one, industrial one, okay?
Not trucking.
And there are permitted uses within the I-one zone, and a warehouse is a permitted use. And as is typical of warehouses, there, there are trucks involved.
Yeah, and do we know how many? Has that study been done? I mean, you have seventy-five thousand square feet building. I mean, that's going to accommodate quite a few trucks bringing stuff in and out.
Well, we do have our traffic engineer, Gary Dean, who prepared the traffic report.
And if you live in Hillsborough, as some of you probably do here, you should know what the traffic's like on Sunnymead Road right now, and Falcon Road, which is a commuter road to get to 287, and is, is all that capable of handling that much more traffic? It's just something I'm suggesting.
I understand. And, wait, we'll hear Mr. Dean's testimony, and when you're welcome to come back up and, and ask him those questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for this testimony? One more? Okay, sure.
My name is Anna Potinsky, P-O-T-Y-N-S-K-Y.
Can you get the mic closer? You're a softer talker, so use, use right to the microphone.
Anna Potinsky, 295 Sunnymead Road.
Okay.
Okay, the one question I have is, the culvert, or whatever you call it-
Yes.
-that runs under the road right now, is there any plans to widen that or do anything with it?
No.
Okay. That, I mean, right now, the road is so narrow that there isn't like one inch of macadam on the, on the side of the white line. It's crumbled, and it's just a big concrete pipe. Anybody goes, well, I mean, we've already had two cars almost land in our front yard, because it's a curb, so that's a concern. I mean, I'd imagine there's going to be, even if there isn't, if it's the same amount of water, it might not, this be the time to, to address that, too, because it's, it's a mess. I mean, I don't know if it's directly related, but if, if any, if there's any additional water or anything else coming through there, and basically, it, it's a bare concrete pipe with no, no guards, no nothing around it.
Okay.
So, just another point, I don't know if this is the right time, but-
Okay, that's more testimony than a question, but, thank you. All right, so, any other questions for Mr. Decker? All right, so seeing them, we'll move to next witness.
Would the board like the traffic testimony now?
I think it might be a good time, just getting a feel.
Okay. I'd like to call up Gary Dean from Dean and Dolan. He's our civil engineer, that's our traffic consultant. He, too, has testified many times before this board, so I would ask that he be accepted as an expert in the field of traffic engineering.
We'll accept his qualifications.
Yes, I do. Certainly, Gary Dean, D-E-A-N. Board members, good evening. I have been retained by the applicant to evaluate the projected traffic impacts associated with the use. As Mr. Decker explained, the property features a limited number of parking spaces, given the nature of the use as a warehouse or a storage facility. And then, to the rear or eastern side of the property, are loading docks. And of course, as a warehouse, we might expect trucks to be associated with the operation. It is very challenging for me to forecast or tell you exactly how many trucks on any given day or at any given hour, simply because we don't know the tenant. There, there are some tenants that also will not use tractor trailers, that may use box trucks if they're principally delivering locally or storing for, say, for example, retailers at nearby stores. They may avail themselves of the warehouse for seasonal storage and things of that nature, but they wouldn't necessarily be using tractor trailers. Just for identification purposes, we submitted a traffic study as part of this application dated March twenty-seventh of this year. And in that report, as is typical in any traffic study, we did traffic counts along Sunnymead Road and Falcon Road. As this board is aware, I served as the traffic engineer for the Gateway at Sunnymead project, which is just to the west of Falcon and Sunnymead. It's now principally under construction. As part of the approval of that particular project, the developer was obligated to not only design, but fund a traffic signal at Falcon Road and Sunnymead Road. Working with Mr. White's office, we are now in the design phase. We've met with Mr. White's staff to review our design. We are undergoing a series of revisions, and I expect that within the next week or two, we'll be refiling that, so that Mazer Consulting can ideally approve the plan, which will then take it into the construction phase. But that is a commitment, and I'll say, as part of the off-tract mitigation that that developer provided for that approval. So it's, it's not a matter of if, it's now just a matter of when that signal is installed. But I would have to defer to Mr. White, given that those units are being occupied, and that the warrants, which is the technical term for justifying the signal, have been met. I expect its implementation will be fairly short, probably even before this, this facility is built. As part of our traffic study, as I indicated, we did look at traffic counts. We, we are aware that Falcon Road to Sunnymead Road is in fact a commuter route, as was expressed, and that has precipitated the need for the signal. And obviously, that intersection, we all know, we knew it five years ago, operates with some difficulties, and that is why the signal is being installed. As part of this study, we projected the amount of traffic associated with the use. As is typical in traffic engineering, we tend to err on the side of overestimating, just so that we identify the impacts. We, we have taken the most, most conservative evaluation. I would expect that this facility, realistically, would generate about fifteen vehicles in each of the peak hours, and that's principally associated with employees that may be arriving in the morning and then leaving at the end of the day. In answer to one of the questions that was posed, generally speaking, trucks don't come in at peak hours. And the reason is, most over-the-road truck drivers try to avoid rush hour. They know that that's when, particularly 206, and some of the secondary roads are most heavily congested, so it's not an ideal time for transport of materials. That usually occurs after rush hour. To put a number to it, and again, it is tenant-driven, but what we've seen from other warehouses is that we might expect one or two trucks at most during the peak hours, maybe ten percent of the traffic. So I don't see that as a particularly big number. Obviously, this is an industrial zone property, and the use is permitted, and I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge trucks as part of the overall impact. As you've heard Mr. Decker describe, the, the mouth of the driveway, or its intersection with Sunnymead Road, will feature very large radii to accommodate the biggest trucks that we can anticipate. And, and the reason for that is obviously so that they don't cross the center line or interfere with through traffic on Sunnymead Road. In, in terms of where the traffic goes, as we look at typical patterns, we have estimated in our study that about a quarter of the traffic exiting the site might travel to the south toward Hamilton Road, or twenty-five percent. Fifty-five percent of the traffic could continue north on Sunnymead Road, and perhaps twenty would then go to the west on Falcon Road, ultimately to get to 206. And, and some of that traffic is just not all the truck routes, it's how employees will filter their way through the system, as we've seen from the current growth patterns. We did forecast the additional traffic that we might expect in the future. We did include the full build-out of the Sunnyme, our Gateway at Sunnymead project, and we also added what we typically do, which is background traffic growth. I'm pleased to say, and as most board members know, the metric that traffic engineers use to describe operations is known as level of service. It's like a report card, with A being the best condition, and F being a poor or congested condition. And obviously, the left turns from Falcon Road going on to Sunnymead Road, they operate at level of service. F, no surprise, that is why the signal will be placed into operation. The site, however, will operate with levels of service A during both peak hours, and that's attributed to two reasons. One is very low site traffic that we forecast, but also by comparison, north of Falcon Road, the traffic on Sunnymead, south of Falcon Road, is a much lower volume. And so, as we apply our standard evaluation techniques, we will have very short delays, and I, and I would concur that the street is, it's busy, but it's not like the other side of Sunnymead Road or some busier roads in the township. We've reviewed the overall circulation, working with Mr. Decker's office, and as described, and I'm going to point, but we are showing the new driveway, which is wider than the driveway you see on the property today. So it will be bigger to accommodate trucks, not only for general tool, but also the property that is the subject of this application. There is a shared driveway along the northerly side of the property that, that leads to the existing use, but also the front or westerly side, which would be the passenger vehicle parking, and then to the rear, where we have the proposed loading docks. And then, the truck traffic from the rear and automobile traffic would just continue the opposite direction to get to Sunnymead- the opposite direction to get to Sunnymead Road. As Mr. Decker indicated, the parking stalls, I would say functionally meet your standard in terms of their dimensions and are certainly appropriate for, say, a once-a-day parking event for employees. These aren't retail spaces or restaurants that have a lot of turnover. It's generally a very static use, not only with what goes on in the building as storage, but in terms of the employee activity. And I'd be happy to address any questions or comments from the board or the public as appropriate.
So, I'm sorry, I lost you a little with like how you go from F to A, but it's just because of the nature of the light and how you calibrate it, or?
No. Once the light goes in, the levels of service at Falcon, and I'm pointing again, but it's off the exhibit. It's in the upper left-hand corner. In the morning, for example, as traffic is heading towards Route 287, the left turn eastbound on Falcon that wants to turn left and go north on Sunnymead, that backs up, and we've seen stacking of eight, 10 more vehicles, and it's a long time. It's a wait to get through there. That's an F today. When the signal goes in in the future, that'll go up. I don't recall, but it's definitely C or better for all approaches. So, that's the whole purpose of the signal. The driveway, our site driveway is level of service A. So, we have safe and efficient ingress and egress for the property, but the Falcon and Sunnymead is that off-tract condition that will soon be addressed.
Is there any kind of rule of thumb for warehouse use as to, you know, given the number or the size of a warehouse or the number of bays, the number of vehicles you could, you would anticipate at a peak period?
There is, and that's that one to two that I shared.
And that's each hour or peak hour?
That's peak hour.
Okay.
As we get to the middle of the day, and again, it's tenant-driven, it may be a little higher. There are only, I think it's 12, Tom, loading docks in the back. So, there's only 12 trucks that can fit. It's not a Wakefern distribution or, you know, a million-square-foot building. This is on the smaller side for a warehouse, and so with 12 docks, you know, as a truck comes in, unloads, is reloaded, that takes a fair amount of time. So, the overall activity is just, it can't be that great, and I don't know whether this would be a multi-tenanted or single-tenanted building, but that may also affect the typical turnover. But those are the numbers that we estimated based on the size of the building, so you're correct. And again, a higher percentage is smaller box trucks typically.
Are there any data on your, when you did your study, as to the type of vehicles that are existing now in that traffic? If there's any truck traffic coming in serving the Lowe's Promenade, or are they mostly coming in from the other side in 206?
Append it to our traffic report, I'm pretty sure we did, yes, we've included our traffic counts, and I'm looking for, yes, we've identified the number of trucks, and I'll try to decode it for you and what it means. Toward the, the second to last page in our report is just sheet entitled "Traffic Survey Sheet," and this is what our field staff comes back with after they do their counts, and each movement at the intersection is numbered, which is on the third to the last page. I'm sorry, I double-printed mine. For example, going north on Sunnymead Road, say, past the site frontage, that's movement number five, just for identification purposes. And in the morning, there's about one to two trucks every 15 minutes. So, in an hour, going north past the site, these are existing trucks on Sunnymead Road. Over the course of an hour, that's probably six trucks. Going south, that's movement number one. There, it's even less volume, although there were seven trucks that went southbound right at 8:15 in the morning. So, as you look at, as one looks at each movement, for example, coming off Falcon Road and turning left, at 7 o'clock in the morning, there were three trucks. At 7:15, there were two. At 7:30, there was one. At 7:45, there was one. At 8 o'clock, there were three. At 8:15, there were five. So, maybe that answers, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. Could that be Lowe's? Could that be Kohl's?
It's existing truck traffic that's on right now.
Correct. These are, this is existing truck traffic.
And they are coming, are they coming through Manville and Weston Road, or are they coming down from Hillsborough, Hamilton Road and coming down and making a left?
All of the above. For example, coming from Manville, that's, and again, I'm gonna, hopefully you have the page. It's "Traffic Survey Sheet," and it shows the morning peak count from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, coming from Manville, which are movements one and two. Two trucks at 7:00, four trucks at 7:15, six trucks at 7:30, one at 7:45, one at 8:00. 10, 10 trucks at 8:15, five at 8:30 and two at 8:25. So, if I add all of that up, 10, 15, there may be 16 trucks an hour coming from Manville, and I would say the pattern follows suit on Falcon Road itself.
Okay.
So, it's not as though there are no trucks and we're adding trucks. We're obviously in industrial use. I mean, we have other uses on Sunnymead Road that contribute to truck traffic, and perhaps some of them are in this count. I will say in general, afternoon truck activity is lighter, as we look to that second to the last page. Unlike 16, say, trucks an hour, the volume drops to maybe eight, maybe half the volume in the afternoon.
Okay. Any other questions? David?
Yeah. Can you talk a little bit about the new access to the front property? Obviously, you're closing off the existing access and there'll be a new driveway. Will that have any impact on the circulation or parking on the front property?
I think it's a benefit, rather than creating a new driveway, which, you know, in theory, every new driveway on a public street represents another potential point of conflict or influence of traffic streams. So, by sharing access, it's usually encouraged from an access management perspective. To Mr. Maskey's point, no different than I would say, call it an industrial planned unit development, where a single road is created, where industrial buildings flank that new access, and then each user in turn filters onto that common driveway rather than each lot having its own. So, in that sense, it does have a benefit in terms of...
Yeah, the question was about benefit. It's actually required. It was required by the original subdivision to do this. My question had more to do with the functionality because now trucks are coming and cars are coming into that site, accessing that building from a totally different angle. I just want to make sure that it doesn't interfere with the circulation on the site and/or the parking, and that the radius of the curb is enough so that when they get out to the access lane, there's plenty of room to make the turn, that type of question, more of a functionality thing. It's required. It has to be there. But is it designed so as not to interfere with the existing functions on the site?
Yes, and obviously, this has been vetted with the property owner to ensure that obviously their needs to continue to operate that building were met, and we wouldn't be here if we didn't pass that test. But I would say that it's an identical design at each of the driveways to be equally functional.
Mr. White, anything? Anyone else?
I just had a question, and I understand the counts, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Maskey, and I think some of the residents brought it up, that the condition of Sunnymead Road, I mean Falcon Road, we know was in poor shape, and it has rather large ditches on the side, and so does Sunnymead. How does that get addressed with a warehouse facility coming in? And I know, you know, 77,000 square feet. I mean, I'm not expecting, you know, eight tractor trailers, but I think it's a fair assumption to know that there's probably going to be tractor trailers coming in and out at some point. So, how does the condition of the roads that are there now play into this? I mean, what is the plan? I mean, obviously, I don't think, we don't put roads in with ditches anymore. We probably put them in with culverts or something. Mr. Maskey, how do we address that?
Yeah, the, well, Falcon Road question, that was addressed earlier. The developer of Gateway, because of the size of that project, is required, they are going to be rebuilding Falcon Road, they're going to be installing the traffic signal at the corner. The township ordinances do not measure the condition necessarily of the adjoining infrastructure. So, if it's a point where the trucks could not make the turn on, either into the site or off the site because of the condition of the road, or if there was some sort of safety, then perhaps it could require a certain degree of off-tract improvement. If you accept the testimony that that driveway is being designed in such a fashion that they don't have to cross the center line, or that they don't, that it's not an issue or a potential for them to run into a ditch, I think that that's for the board to decide whether or not they would then require some amount of off-tract improvement in the immediate vicinity of that driveway. The longer, Sunnymead Road generally, it's a, it's...
It's an old road, and it's kind of crowded, and there's ditches.
It's zoned that way. I mean, it's a larger question of whether or not zones meet the streets that they're on.
Yeah, I'm not concerned so much about the driveway. I understand with the curvature and that. I understand that. But I guess my question is really about the condition of Sunnymead Road and adding, you know, you know, again, there's probably going to be some tractor trailers that are going to come in and out of there. I think to say that there's not going to be any is probably not going to be the case. But, I mean, is that something that us as a board should take a look at as part of this, or is there some plan to do? I mean, Falcon Road, you know, we know has been an issue here in the town for many, many years, and I know the lights coming in, and I know people in the wintertime slide in the ditch. I've seen them. I've traveled those roads, and Sunnymead Road, probably along, at some point, you know, it's a heavy commuter road, I think needs to be addressed at some point, whatever that is. So, my question is, do we take that into consideration with this application, knowing that we're adding larger, I mean, I understand cars, not a problem, but box trucks potentially, you know, tractor trailers that are now traversing. Now, what do we do with that? That's my question. Or do we not take it into account, or do we take it into account?
Yeah, I understand. It's a tough question because it is a permitted use.
Correct.
If there were some indication, and I don't know if we could get that tonight, that there is some sort of safety issue involved with this, where in other words, the road is in such poor condition that it just can't accommodate any trucks or cars or any type of additional traffic, then that's a different story. I don't know if we have that type of evidence in front of us. That's the only thing, yeah, that's the only way I could tie the two together.
I just want to raise the point, you know, I think all of us here travel, we're familiar with it. You know, there's not much siding. There's ditches on either side of those roads, and I know Falcon Road eventually will be fixed, but I think it's a point that needs to be brought up.
Mr. Wagner, if you and the board feel the need that there needs to be a review of the road and the impact that this application might have on it, then you can either designate Mr. White's office to do so, or Mr. Bellinger's office, or a combination thereof to provide guidance to this board in making that decision, and what, if any, obligations they could then request of the applicant relative to the impact that this facility will have on that road.
Is it also possible, as a, and I don't know, as a condition of approval, that the direction of traffic be determined as to, say, for example, would have to go out and go left towards Hamilton Road to stay out of?
Well, it's a municipal road. You can determine if you want no right, no left turns. That's a call that you all can make. We don't have some of our standard problems with DOT or with the county. This is your call.
I think that might be a good idea of getting that checked, because that is a small road and gets a lot of traffic on it, and more trucks...
If a member of the board would like to make a motion to ask Mr. White's office in conjunction with Mr. Bellinger to take a look at the road and the impact as well as the, as well as the ingress and egress, then I think it's appropriate to do so.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion if...
Okay. All right. We have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So, then we'll take a roll call on that, that we're going to defer to Mr. White and Mr., and our township engineering department to determine the viability of the road to handle, or this...
The viability of the road to handle the proposed traffic from the applicant, the impact that the applicant's usage would have on the road going forward, and also as to ingress and egress from the site.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pieson?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hesteg?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Raji?
Yes. I believe this should not be part of this application. I'm not sure why we're addressing a road that's already got significant vehicle traffic as it relates to this application. That can be addressed under separate, under separate review, but at this point, I guess yes, it doesn't matter anyway.
I don't think that all it's asking is just some information to make a better decision for this applicant. I don't think it's going to make, it just allows us the ability to decide what's best for everybody there, so I will say yes also.
Mr. Julian?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I was going down the line. Sorry, Michael. So, we can still have more testimony on any of your other things, because we're not, obviously, are we going to come back or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking by point of, by way of clarification, you know, perhaps this could be a condition of approval, that if your professionals agree that there's sufficient, as evidence that the road can handle it specific to the site, then I think it should be just a simple condition of approval, rather than, you know, come back.
I mean, I would respectfully just disagree as a, it's not that simple, based on our experience with what happened to Falcon Road and just simple construction traffic. And where my concern is, you know, is, you know, is with the additional traffic, truck traffic that may come on here, the accelerated deterioration of that road is where my concern is, is what can we, you know, perhaps expect, you know, the lifespan of that road may be short. If it might be shortened, it may not be shortened, but I think I'd rather have that information upfront before I make a decision like that.
It's not, it's not just the issue of the road itself. It's the related issues in regard to ingress and egress that I think is, can't be a condition of approval.
Yeah, I mean, my only concern too is, I mean, there is other applicants that are on Sunnymead that we did approve this year also. That does have truck traffic. There's other, you know, other trucks on that road that...
And it may come to the conclusion, Mr. Julian, that there isn't anything more that the township can require the applicant relative to the condition of the thoroughfare. The issue may, however, turn into some of the issues raised by some of the neighbors as to what the impact of the trucks going on and off the site have as to their properties and the like, as well as the traffic itself, which may not change the condition of the road. It may not require any more work on the road, but may have an impact on how the trucks are going to come in and go out at that point.
I think that's just the number of, the number of cars that go in either direction, and I think the testimony from Mr. Dean satisfied that because it was relatively low, which would take us back to, if there was a clean bill of health with Mr. White's review, that could be a condition of approval. Yes, no?
Well, I think, you know... Ultimately, yes, but not right now. We'll agree. I think that's what Mr. O'Grady is suggesting, that as a condition of approval, to my words, get this application finished tonight, rather than go back and have Mr. White and Mr. Belling should do the review. We'll agree as a condition of approval, and obviously, he can correct me if I'm wrong. We'll agree to... to whatever Mr. White ultimately finds will become a condition of approval for the application itself.
But that's, we don't even know what that is yet, so...
That's right.
Right.
But that's, I think, what Mr. O'Grady was seeking from this board this evening.
Well, do you... I would just note that northeast, northeast...
I don't understand the end game, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, the northeast Great Dane trailers is right down the street, there's hundreds of trailers, you know, that are going to generate tremendous amount of truck traffic beyond this. It's a permitted use with no variances, the road may be narrow, it may be an old road, but I would just suggest that the board defer to the professionals to determine site-specific conditions and whether they're suitable.
Right, and I think that's part of it too, was just to make sure that the, you know, that there's sufficient turning radius there, so they're not coming in, you know, causing any problems with oncoming traffic on the other side.
But we need to, that was not the motion.
No, I think it was a...
So I think we need to be clear as to what we're asking for, because that was not the motion.
Well, I believe part was about the egress and in and out of that particular property with trucks, was part of what that motion was for, if I'm correct, right? And whether the road at that particular site could handle those turns, correct? Is that...
It was also about the viability of the road.
Correct.
What happens if that's determined not? I mean, if it's just about the geometry, hey, you've got 35-foot radiuses, if they don't work, we go to 40. That's simple engineering, that's not a problem. Viability is another thing.
Okay.
So what are we, what are we asking for? I don't understand.
Well, I think that the, Bob, you just talked about the road condition of the trucks coming in at that particular one site.
I just wanted to make sure, maybe I wasn't clear, is we know the issues that we had with Falcon Road, and the complaints that came in, and the people that travel in, and here we are five or six years later, it's still not fixed. All I'm saying is, I feel the condition of Sunnymead Road is poor, and all my question was, if you're going to have additional trucks on it, how is that going to impact? And at some point, Sunnymead Road is probably going to need to be redone, the same that Falcon Road is. There's going to be more development at some, I'm just putting it out there, do we need to look at that as part of that, that's all I'm asking. If you don't want to, we don't have to, but I think as a resident of the town and being on this board, I have the right to ask that. We have residents that brought it up as a concern, I travel, and I'm sure everybody else travels it, it's a deteriorating road, there's no shoulder, and I'm just asking, does it make sense, would we look at it now or not? If the board decides, look, they don't want to look at it, I'm fine with that. I don't have a, I just wanted to bring it up.
Well, I think it was more the addition, there was a discussion about the possibility of off-tract improvements. You can't just unilaterally indicate, oh, we think you should contribute X dollars, you've got to have a basis for the concept of what X dollars is. If you're not interested in an off-tract improvement for this site relative to the impact on Sunnymead, then you need a motion to rescind the last motion, you all can move on.
Forget all that, I mean, he's just talking about the condition of the road, so is Mr. White able to do a review of the road, and with the expected additional traffic, one to two large trucks per day, or per hour, whatever it was, would the condition of the road still be considered safe quality?
That's all, you know...
If he's able to answer that question, then we can approve, we could consider approving based on that, or, I mean, is that something that you can answer in a review, Mr. White?
That's not that easy, and what I would say, suggest is, Mr. Dean, what's the average daily traffic coming into the site?
I haven't calculated the average daily traffic.
Versus what's on the road right now?
Yeah, and that's why, I mean, what I do is typically take what's there in the peak hours, it's usually eight to 10 percent of the daily traffic, and so I have to work backwards from those numbers. Here's what I did, just so that the board is aware, I looked at both the AM peak hour and the PM peak hour, in terms of traffic on Sunnymead Road and contribution by this site, and depending on the peak hour, it's four to 2 percent. So that means 96 to 98 percent of the traffic on Sunnymead Road today, forgetting about any other users, is unrelated to this site. And if the governing body or the planning board were considering a wholesale reconstruction of Sunnymead Road, this applicant arguably might have a 2 to 4 percent pro-rata fair share, but that's a big contribution from elsewhere. So, the numbers are out there, and I've calculated them based on the projections in our report, and whether it's a daily traffic number or a peak hour, I would submit that we're in that general range. But to answer the question, it's, design engineering is not as simple as, the road is acceptable right at this moment, but if we add one or two more trucks per hour, it fails. There's not an engineering standard out there that does that. If we went to quadrupling, or 50 times more traffic, then yes, but the numbers I shared, you know, when we figure 16 trucks an hour, we're 10 percent based on truck use, so we're still, 98 percent is coming from elsewhere, or 90.
Mr. Dean, out of curiosity, since the applicant has no idea what the use is or who the tenant will be, how do you make a determination as to truck traffic on or off the site if you have no idea what the use of the property will be at this time?
Fair question. What we do, the board is familiar with ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and that's the data that is used to come up with the projections of regular traffic. ITE has also developed projections for truck traffic for a variety of uses, light industrial, manufacturing, and warehousing. And so as we look at a warehousing use for ITE data, it's then broken down between box trucks, tractor trailers, and passenger vehicles, and that's how I derive the numbers for this use. But to answer your question, Mr. Bernstein, beyond that, I can't refine that any further.
Let me, if I may, Chair, one more question. It was tangentially raised by some of the public, the proposed hours of operation are 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday to Friday. If there was additional truck traffic that came before, after those uses, or on the weekends, would your numbers change?
They wouldn't, only because my numbers are based on commuter weekday peak hours, which is when the system is most constrained. I think if a truck travels at 2:00 in the morning, just by way of example, when there's no traffic on the road, that's a good thing from a traffic guy's perspective, it may not be so good from the neighbor's perspective, so I'm sensitive to those concerns, but to the extent there is more off-peak or even weekend use, typically that's a better from my limited focus.
Okay, all right, so, do we want to continue on this, or do we want, Bob?
You look, I don't have a problem withdrawing, all I felt is it's something that I feel that, you know, we need to, need to look at. If the board doesn't want to look at, I don't want to hold the application up, but, you know, I know what we went through with Falcon Road, and I don't know how many years it's been, and it's been repaved, and it's still, I understand it's going to be fixed with a traffic light, and at some point, at some point later down the road, but are, you know, is it going to be, you know, going to be faced the same thing with Sunnymead, you know? I don't think the road's in that great of a shape, if they want to, I don't have any problem with the warehousing, I'm just raising the question as a resident with that road.
And just kind of...
Don't feel that way, I mean, that's fine.
I think a lot of that traffic now, because of the 206 problems, you're getting more traffic on Sunnymead than you normally would.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't...
And my, I mean, my concern's not the passenger vehicles, because they're like...
Sure.
I'm just looking at the percentage increase of that heavier vehicle traffic that's going to go on there. So I know, I understand the 2 to 4 percent, but that's looking at the totality of vehicles, I'm looking at what's the percent increase of, you know, and we can create some arbitrary line of, you know, weight above that, is what that increase is going to do, because that, you know, getting to Bob's point, I understand what he's talking about, is because it's heavy vehicle traffic is what exasperated the Falcon Road issue, not passenger vehicles. And I think that's where Bob's concerned.
It was, you know, it was the construction of that development with the trucks, and obviously you're establishing a warehouse, so there's going to be some construction, it's going to need to take place, clearing, and vehicles are going to need to come in and out on that. So, I'm not sure how long it takes to construct a warehouse, but I'm sure they're not going to do it with pickup trucks, right? It's probably going to be larger equipment that's going in and out till that is done. So, I mean, that's, I'm just raising it as a point of concern, that's all.
But that's also probably very small in comparison to Gateway, right? I mean, that's huge, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I'm sure it probably is, but I mean, you know, I don't...
It's true, but Falcon Road, remember, they had to repave it twice already for us, so...
Okay, so, so what is this...
To rescind the motion?
I mean, I'll make the motion to rescind it, I just wanted to bring it up for this board to consider, you know, take a look at it. So if that's the general consensus, I have no problem making the motion to rescind that, and, you know, we'll, as I say, we'll see what comes out. So I'll make the motion to rescind the...
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Pieson?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Hesteg?
Yes.
Skovup?
Yes.
Mr. Raji?
Bill, I've got a question for you. Can you do a determination of that, the adequacy of the turning radiuses coming in and out of the property, to make sure that the traffic, the trucks aren't going to be coming into oncoming traffic, that...
That was the purpose, we requested a truck turning template that, the exhibit that we haven't seen yet. I mean, it was presented tonight, hasn't been submitted officially.
Okay, so once it's submitted, you'll be able to determine?
Correct.
And if it needs to, can you make that determination tonight if it's going to be adequate, or is that something that we would have to...
If we have a break, I can go over and take a look at it.
Or it can be a condition of approval.
Well, I mean, would you recommend it be a condition of approval?
It's already in my letter to provide that, because we want to make sure the trucks can get in and get out. So, you condition your approval on my letter, it's there, it's covered.
So you would make a recommendation if it was inadequate to, you know, increase the flare, I'll call it?
Yes.
All right, yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Chair Lani?
Yes, okay. Slight derail there, but I think it was all good, good conversation. So, I guess we need to open, any more questions for Mr. Dean? So we need to open to public on Mr. Dean's testimony, we are still open to public. We didn't close it before, so we're going to start with, any questions on the left side again? No, on the left, so, to the right, anyone have questions, come up for Mr. Dean, same thing as before, you're, hold on, you come up first, sir.
Yeah, we'll skip through this. John Potinsky, 295 Sunnymead Road.
Okay.
Okay, and to some of his time studies, I would almost welcome any one of you to come and sit on my front yard and watch the traffic that goes by. Not too much was mentioned about Great Dane traffic. There's a large number of trucks go up and down that road every day from Great Dane, and none of the trucks can make the turn on Falcon Road without going into the opposite lane. And as a matter of fact, the trucks coming out of that building right now cannot make the turn onto Sunnymead Road without going into two lanes. You literally, in the morning, can sit 10 minutes coming out of my driveway to pull out, and I don't care which direction you want to go. And we also had another problem created with, when they put a spur on the railroad track. That traffic will back up from the railroad track all the way to Falcon Road, and I don't know how much more of that will complicate the traffic on that road, but...
Okay, so I appreciate, but we just need a question, because you're giving testimony now, we just, if you have a question for Mr. Dean, then, well, you'll have a chance to make more comment later, but right now we just need a question, if that's possible.
Okay, that's pretty much all I want to say.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Come on, Dor.
I think you, I couldn't...
It's only because I've known you for 40 years.
I don't hear what he said, but...
All right, so first thing is, name and address again, please.
Again?
Yes, because it's new.
Gloria Kuvia, 301 Sunnymead Road, Hillsborough, New Jersey.
All right, go ahead.
A very, very important issue, and I don't know if it was discussed. Do they count how often the train comes, four times a day? At night, there are 200 cars on the train, that means any traffic on Sunnymead Road is in front of my house for 30 minutes, so help me God.
Open up a stand, sell some lemonade or something.
I can't even...
All right, so the question is, Mr. Dean, did you take into consideration the train and the possible queuing of that?
I'm aware of the train and the crossing, and at the peak hours, when we studied, we were looking at the site and at Falcon, I don't believe there was a train that passed when we did our counts. I'm not saying it didn't occur.
How long were you there?
We were there for two hours in the morning and two hours at night.
You have to come in the afternoon, because, seriously, that's a very big thing.
Okay, thank you.
And they know, the train goes, at night, I swear, we counted 200 cars, people sitting in front of my house until they went down. The daytime, 65 cars maybe, but they just sit there, people turn around and go back to Falcon Road. They come in my driveway, and they go out, and that's the truth.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, there's nothing else I can say, I'm tired, I'm going home to sleep, I had enough, and you had enough for me.
Thank you.
Thank you again, I apologize, but...
Thank you for your comments, no need to apologize.
All right.
Appreciate the input, thank you.
Thank you.
I wish you all lots of love, you got a big job ahead of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I love your life, everybody.
All right, that's the good life, that's right there. All right, so, is there anyone else? All right, we're done with Mr. Dean.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a five-minute break here, so our stenographer can cool his fingers off after that bristling testimony, but we'll be back in 9:25. It's 9:30, we're back in session, we took a 10-minute break, and we're now, just finished testimony with the traffic consultant, Mr. Dean, so we'll be back to Mr. O'Grady, is there anything else you'd like to say?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our last witness, and we'll try to keep it very brief, recognizing the time of day, is Arthur Hemm. He is our architect. Mr. Hemm, could you just briefly...
Let me swear him in first.
This is where I testified, this is the whole truth about the street. You state, but in increments?
Arthur Hemm, E.G.N.N.
Mr. Hemm, are you a licensed architect?
Yes, I am.
In the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And have you appeared before planning boards and boards of adjustment in the past?
I have, many times, I think this is the first time before this board, though.
I would like to introduce Mr. Hemm as our qualified, as our witness.
We'll accept Mr. Hemm's qualifications.
Mr. Hemm, can you please explain your design and vision for this building?
Yes, it's a one-story warehouse, meeting all the requirements, there's no variances required for this building. It's 35 feet high, 77,745 square feet. It's, we're planning to be a sprinkler building, it's going to be a tilt-up construction, concrete walls, a metal frame roof. When, during construction, anticipated to meet all the requirements of the Uniform Construction Code. Being that it's set back from the street, even though it is set back from the street, we were anticipating to give it some architectural interest, which you see on the elevations, but on the floor plan here, again, it's just warehouse.
Mr. Hemm, can you describe that exhibit in detail, and how it's marked, as you had, as you had submitted it?
We marked it as Exhibit A5. It's the floor plan, basically warehouse space to the back, with the loading docks to the back, and a small office space that's a support for the warehouse function. Along with the warehouse function, we've got a couple of mechanical areas, that's part of the first floor. There's been some conversation in the letter about the mechanical units, anticipated to be up on the roof, towards the center of the building, you know, not visible from the street or neighbors. Like I said, it's going to be a, you know, concrete tilted-up construction, we tried to keep it simple, but again...
Could you, could you describe the exhibit, please, Mr. Hemm?
Exhibit number...
Sorry, yep, A6, elevations.
Thank you.
The top is the, the front, given some blue accent colors to, you know, make accent to the front. Again, just tried to make it appealing, hopefully, the elevations can speak for themselves.
Uh, the, you have windows, is that, I tried to see, there's, in the front?
Yes, we have, you know, high windows, windows on the front, it'd be like a metal frame, you know, a window through that, you know, concrete, you know, bound, uh, wall.
Okay.
Yeah, the idea is to get, you know, natural light into the building.
David, anything?
Nothing.
Mr. White?
Anything?
Anything from the board? Okay, and, well, I don't see any public, but I'll ask any questions from the public on this testimony? Okay, seeing none, well, thank you, Mr. Hemm.
We have nothing further, we appreciate the board's time, we understand you're all volunteers, and we thank you for your consideration for this application.
Mr. Chairman, just if you could briefly, the, the environmental commission brought up, or recommended that a phase one be conducted, can you just briefly describe the results of your phase one analysis?
Reminds me, still, of the road.
Thank you, again, Tom Decker. A phase one assessment was prepared by Whitman Associates, or Whitman, we did not prepare it, however, the results of that phase one was that there are no on-site concerns.
I'm sorry, what did you say, the, the results were what, sorry?
I'm sorry, that there was no, there were no issues on the site as far as environmental concerns.
Mr. Decker, is it, is it correct that, to your understanding, that this was previously historically undeveloped in the area of the proposed...
Correct.
...building? Thank you.
I just want to suggest, I reviewed your report, so I just want to point out that, although I agree with you, there is no evidence of environmental concerns, but there is a paragraph in the end where it says if development, school, childcare center, residence or playground is planned on a subject property, partner recommends sampling related to the agriculture use in accordance with the New Jersey DEP Historically Applied Pesticide Site Technical Guidance. So just for the record, in case that ever does come to fruition, I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Question maybe for someone, but the, we've talked about the hours being Monday to Friday, eight to six, and then is there any way for access to, if people want to come in before or after those hours, or weekends, or is it going to be closed, the facility? I mean, obviously, you haven't sold it yet, but are you stating basically that it's going to be, you're applying for Monday to Friday, eight to six only?
That, again, since this is a tenant-driven application on spec, we don't have specifics, but I think the answer is we will comply with the township ordinance, and if not, we'll be back before this board.
Okay.
There is no ordinance, that's why we're asking the question.
That's right.
Would the applicant agree to bring back the application as a condition, once you have a tenant or tenants, so we know exactly what we're dealing with before we simply, before the board commits or doesn't commit to a situation where we find the neighbors visiting the township committee, et cetera, saying there is 2:00 a.m., 3:00 a.m., all Sunday, all Saturday traffic of trucks going on and off the site because we didn't say you couldn't? And you've been before this board enough, Mr. O'Grady, to know that when we don't pin things down, we end up with issues down the road. Your office has been involved in several of those.
Yeah. I, I would caution on, you know, I, I think that the, that we're constrained by the ordinances, and...
You can't be constrained, Michael, by something that doesn't exist. You want to be, if, if you're suggesting that we pass one before we adopt this application, I'll recommend that to the township committee, but you're not constrained because there are none, and that's why we have these conversations every time one of these applications comes before this board or the zoning board, just for that reason. And we end up with residents coming to the board and to the committee wanting to know why it is, in spite of the fact that the place is only open from nine to five or eight to six, there's truck traffic at 3:00 a.m. in the morning, there are trucks parked outside the facility at 2:00 a.m. on a Sunday, when the place doesn't open till 8:00 a.m. on a Monday. So the, the board is, the suggestion of the board is either to limit the traffic to only those hours, or is your client willing to come back once they figure out who they're going to put in there and see where we are?
And what I would, what I would, I'd offer a compromise to you, that we would agree to the eight to six, and if, if the particular tenant user wants to increase the hours of operation, then we could come back before the board with that specific use.
I would all, I think that's a fair compromise, but one other request, and the one other request is that E, that no one is allowed to access the site nor park on Sunnymead Road waiting for access to the site except during the current hours, proposed hours of operation.
That's fine.
Thank you. Okay, so, thank you, Mr. O'Grady. We have a motion to approve the site plan with the understanding and the conditions agreed to by, for Mr. White's office as far as the egress and the template, as long as that, that meets the board, our engineers' approval. We have the hours of Monday through Friday, eight to six, and if there's any issues with, once the tenants have called in, they would come in front of this board again.
And all other related conditions.
And all other related conditions that were said prior.
As well as any requests made by Mr. White, Mr. Maskey, Mr. Winiger, environmental commission...
But just minus the one about the second...
Yeah, the, the second driveway, the access driveway.
Access driveway.
That was that.
Oh, by the way, I apologize, are we resolved with the lighting?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. So we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, we have a second.
Second.
And we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Eas?
Yes.
Serracca?
Yes.
Hesteg?
Yes.
Skovu?
Yes.
Chwanski?
Yes.
Srirajji?
Yes.
Chair Drulie?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Grady.
Okay, so, we have a little bit of, our next meeting is in two weeks, right?
We have correspondence, right?
Well, we have correspondence?
We got an ordinance. The correspondence is just, uh...
An ordinance.
You were copied on the ordinance that was adopted by the township committee related to the town...
Ordinance 2018-05, we have a copy of.
Just for your reference.
For our reference.
Um, yes, and just, uh, due 28th, although it's usually a business meeting, there is an agenda, so there, there will be things to do that night.
Any of those who can attend, please let the board know as soon as possible, and then we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.